Hello and welcome to the beautiful Bailey Center Auditorium on the grounds of Wallace State College in Hansville. Thank you to our gracious hosts, Wallace State College and Dr. Vicky Karlowix. The 2025 Tribune Debate Series and Question-and-Answer Forums continues today with multiple elections, more specifically, the Hansville Municipal Elections. These events are designed to get the public more unfiltered answers without the questions ahead of time, direct comparisons, and meaningful conversation. Today, we focus on the candidates running for Council Place 1, 3, 4, and Mayor of Hansville. We begin with Place 1 with Janice Shelton. We never heard back from Mr. Mann, so we shall proceed with a Q&amp;A forum, but don't worry, I will have some rebuttals. The Tribune works diligently to reach out to every candidate, but if a candidate declines to respond to emails or calls, there is only so much we can do. The invitation stands, the forum is open. If a candidate does not attend, an empty chair shall sit beside those who do. This has been done at all debates in the past and this year. With all that being said, let's get on with it. Now for the rules for the candidate, some of this will kind of fluctuate. No electronic devices permitted, questions alternate, so no candidate always answers first or last, but in this case, it will be question-and-answer format. Opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be prepared. Time allotted for each question will be two to three minutes, since this is a Q&amp;A forum. Closing statement is limited to 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. And one rebuttal per question, if a candidate calls you out, or if I call you out. Facts only, no accusations, without proof. This will allocate additional time to your opponent. Voters deserve substance over slogan, taking points will be enough, so let's begin.
Okay.
Is it? Are you Mr. Mann?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Mann is here, so let me readjust right quick, Dawson.
I'm sorry, I was just a little late.
It's okay, if you want to come on up. Yeah. One second, all right. If you would, here's your microphone.
How are you?
Just click on.
Yeah, he said he didn't hear anything, you know, we got an email from him.
All right, I'm gonna put this right here. All right. And I'm gonna go to the podium now. Sorry, everyone. Well, Mr. Mann is here, so we will proceed. Again, let me just go over the rules. Since this is now a debate, no electronic device is permitted. We will alternate questions, so the person that goes first will answer the first question. The second person will answer the first question, and then the second person will answer the second question. Does that make sense? We'll alternate. Opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be prepared. Time allotted per question is two minutes. Closing statement is limited to 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. One rebuttal per question, but only if the candidate calls out the other and is set for 45 seconds. Facts only, no accusations without proof. This will allocate additional time to your opponent. Voters deserve substance over slogans, talking points won't be enough. So let's begin. Ms. Shelton, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Okay. The first will be community-specific needs. What is the most pressing issue in your community, and how would you address it first?
The most pressing within our community now is, if I've heard it one time, I've heard it many, many, many times. People want our police force back. People depended on the police force, you know, a lot of things happened. And our fire department has just been bombarded with calls and everything, and they cannot take care of everything. And I do know the sheriff's department, you know, has helping out, but still, it's still not the same as having our own police force, you know. So I do know that's number one with most all the citizens. That is their concern, is they want the police force back.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Mann, the same question. What is the most pressing issue in your community, and how would you address it first?
Well, I would actually second that regarding what she said, because I feel like not only having a police department gives us a sense of identity, we lose a sense of identity when we lose the department. And that, to me, is troublesome for the town, because they say some of the early signs of a decline in a town is we lose our schools and we lose our police department. And I feel, I can't help but say, second that, because yes, we have the Coleman County Police Force coming in, but they're also stretched thin, because they have to go all throughout the county to taking care of this problem and that problem. When we need a more centralized location, I feel, to conduct operations, that's been revamped, built up from the bottom up. And more specifically, I feel it's especially important, especially for women here in Hansville, because I just get this vibe that women are kind of feeling unheard, in a way. Because of like, for instance, like my fiancee and I have been trying, been looking into a case with the human trafficking task force in Coleman County. And I think, and I'm not sure how it would look, the final look would look, but it would be awesome if Hansville joined forces with that in trying to tackle that problem, because the human trafficking is becoming an increasing problem, I feel, in Coleman County.
All right, and that's two minutes. Thank you.
Right on.
All right, we're gonna, Mr. Mann, we're gonna start with you on question two, and this is gonna be on budget review role. How will you evaluate spending proposals before voting to ensure they benefit the residents?
Well, well, the beginning is, it's looking at the budgets, where the money's been going prior. That would be the good starting point, and where it's been, where is the money trailing to? And what is being allocated to? And that would mean taking an in-depth look of like where the finances are going, like say, whether the general fund, for instance, or is it going into this? And it would be, and this is where I kind of would admit that I'm a bit weak in this department. But it would be a taken more in-depth study of like, where is the money going in this department? And this fund, and so on and so forth. And that's really the first step, is, you know, seeing where it's going.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Shelton, it would be the same question. How will you evaluate spending proposals before voting to ensure they benefit residents?
Okay, I, what I would like to say about that is, you know, I'm not a council member or a employee of the city of Hansville, and I'm really not for sure about everything, how the money is being spent. And that would be one thing to look at, you know, and I know there's monies available. You've got to go get it. And I've had, you know, people contact me and say they're willing to help Hansville, and that is a blessing for us. But I would be looking at the overall picture of how the money is being spent and see if it's appropriate, you know, and that's, I think that that would, that would be, I said, in my defense, I'm just, I'm just not sure exactly how, all the money, where it's going.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Shelton, we'll stay with you. It will be infrastructure in your area. This is, you can kind of be specific if, maybe. Which road, sewer, or utility improvements are most needed in Hansville? And what would be your plan to help address and fix these issues?
Okay, I will be the first to say, I'm not familiar of, you know, where the problems are with the sewer or any of that. But I can assure you, if elected, I will work diligently to get what we need, what citizens need, and I can assure you that, I can promise you that, that I'll do my best.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Mann, we're gonna stay on that same question. Which road, sewer, or utility improvements are most needed in Hansville? And what would be your plan to help address and fix the issues?
That's, that is actually easy for me, but I have more personal experience with that. The roads. We have some of the per capita more roads than any other county in Alabama. And it shows, because a lot of them have been forgotten about, looked under radar, et cetera. And that causes, and I can't determine the exact quote, but I'm willing to bet a great deal of money has probably been spent on automobiles, just trying to take the brunt of the road in these potholes. In fact, I remember an infamous pothole, and this is just an example, between cabin fever and the Coleman gas and co-op. And I just see that at a lot of times, especially in my former line of work, when I was a pizza delivery man. Constant problem. I saw so many cars get tore up. And I feel like, really, we gotta start from the beginning of like, what materials are we lacking to keep these roads better maintained and efficient for longer periods of time? And that may mean more money upfront in the initial part, but long-term, not only would it save a lot of money for the roads themselves to get repaired, but it would save money for the regular drivers here in Coleman County and in Hansville. And I'm not, now, I am not an expert on infrastructure, but I do feel that that's one of the biggest things that I would love to look at as far as, you know, infrastructure goes.
Okay. Well, that is two minutes, all right. We will stay with you, Mr. Mann. This is on parks and community spaces. How would you improve or better maintain parks and public spaces in your area?
Well, I feel like an expansion of the parks would be excellent. I feel like, for instance, I loved, I'm putting this as an example, the Dog Park Program that was implemented in Hansville Pond. And I feel like there's a lot of room for growth in that. I think that's just a good start, but other things that I've noticed, even in recent years, that the Hansville Ballpark, right past where Seafood World and all that used to be, has grown significantly. And I am personally pleased with its expansion. And there's gonna be, you know, there's always gonna be someone saying, oh, but it was like this, or it used to be better. But I remember when it was just a little dirt dugout when I was playing T-ball years ago. So I feel like it's came a long, long way, really, in retrospect. But that all being said, there is always room to make things bigger and better. It just takes time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mann. Ms. Shelton, the same question. How would you improve or better maintain parks and public spaces in your area?
That is one of the main questions that a lot of people, since I've been out campaigning, has talked about our parks, and we don't have the tournaments like we used to, and fields need to be upgraded. And to me, this is where experience come in, comes in. If you've got connections with our senator and legislators and stuff, of getting monies here to help with those funds of upgrading our parks and our ballfields and things like that. Because we can get it back, you know, if we get things going. That's what a lot of people are complaining about. They're not kept up like they should be. But it takes money. And as a councilperson, you know, you've got to go get money. You know, you've got to ask for it, it's just not gonna drop in your lap. So I can assure you on that, too. I would work diligently with our senator and legislators to get money for the city of Hansville, for our ballparks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. We'll stay with you. This question is on communication with residents. How will you keep constituents informed about city decisions that directly impact them?
Okay. Social media, a lot of people don't like social media, but it's a very good outreach. And our council sessions, they're streamlined, people can, but I encourage people to get involved in the community and come to our meetings, and, you know, they do a great job of putting it out there at what's being done. But we're gonna have to have everybody helping, you know. I will say that, and invite them to me, and have special meetings for the citizens of Hansville, you know, about what they would like to see done. That's very important. And like I said, just keeping in touch with our citizens, you know, that's, and I'm always available, usually. And most people know me, and I'm more than willing to talk to you, you know, if you just give me a call or reach out to me.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Mr. Mann, same question. How will you keep constituents informed about city decisions that directly impact them?
Well, actually, this is a similar question asked during the political forum, but I, social media is kind of like the easiest, cheapest, most affordable way of getting the word out. I mean, there's just no contest there. But that all being said, I would also like to invite a, more of a environment of inclusion, because I feel like too often, people are kind of out of the know about what's going on. And sometimes they feel almost unwelcome in our own town, and that's not what we want, I feel, in the end. Because this is, this is our town in the end. And if we want to make it our town, and make it great, we have to include everybody in here, of all sides of, you know, to the best that we can apply, to say the least.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mann, we will stay with you. And this is on the grocery tax. What is your stance on the grocery tax? And should legislators continue to bring it down from its current 2% all the way down to zero?
Absolutely. And I say that almost, I mean, I'm being a bit biased, though, I will admit, because I used to work for Publix. But for instance, sales tax alone, and just in Coleman County, is at 9%. That don't sound like a whole lot, but if you think about it, we're paying 90 cents every $10 spent at the groceries, and that nickels and dimes us all the time. And we're amongst the very few states that still implore a grocery tax. If we had no grocery tax, that would incentivize more buying power for our residents and consumers in general, and that ultimately would bring business and revenue for our town. And again, I apologize in the fact that I'm a bit biased, because I worked at Publix for like three years, so I definitely felt the brunt of it. But I definitely would, yeah, zero. Absolutely, if I can get as low as I could, the better. No taxes on that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shelton, same question. What is your stance on the grocery tax? And should legislators continue to bring it down from its current 2% all the way down to zero?
I guess taxes is one of the things I'm very familiar with, because when I retired from the Revenue Commissioner's Office, no one likes taxes. But you do have to have tax to make things happen, too, and monies, you know. If legislators could lower some, but I can't say it'll be back at zero, but I just don't see that happening, but it could. But like I said, when people start talking taxes, it will turn people's deaf ear, they don't want to hear about taxes in this community. But anything that they can do to help our citizens, I'm greatly, I'm for that.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Shelton, we'll stay with you for question seven. This is on personal life leading to public. What would you say has helped prepare you to hold the position and fight for those living in Hansville?
Will you ask that again, please?
What would you say has helped prepare you to hold the position and fight for those living in Hansville?
When everything started happening in Hansville, and we had a situation that happened, and when I retired, I had no intentions of running for any public office. And after I spoke at the council meeting that night about how I felt just as a citizen of Hansville, I had so many people reaching out to me, wanting me to run for office. And I will say that the encouragement people has given me, prayer, I do have a voice. I can speak on behalf of the citizens when needed. And I can assure you, there again, if elected, I will do everything that I can in my power to make sure that, you know, everything is done in the right way, you know, and keep our people abreast at what's going on, you know. I just, like I said, I can tell you, Hansville can have some improvements, and it's gonna happen. You've got people working for it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mann, same question. What would you say has helped prepare you to hold the position and fight for those living in Hansville?
Life experiences, but more specifically, with my line of work, with tried and true retail, fast food, pizza delivery. You learn a lot about people and what they're going through in that line of work. Because in a sense, they call it in the human services, natural helpers. And you, because you get to hear, you know, people's problems over time, and you learn more and more, and build a picture of sorts of like, what's going on in Hansville and what is best needed for its citizens. And I feel like in that, in that work experience, in that line of work over the years, I've learned a lot about what do people want. And it comes with my customer service background. And that, when I bring, I bring that up to say that people talk. And when they talk, you get, you start to build a picture on what the citizens feel is the most important to them as a majority. And that's really the best reason I can give, like why, why I would be a good candidate, at least in this remark, because I've listened to people for over 20 years about their wants and needs and what they're going through, even today on my own personal life.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mann. We'll stay with you on question eight. This will be on accountability. If a city program you supported failed to deliver, how would you take responsibility and address it?
Well, step one is admitting that there's a problem. If you don't, if you can't address it, yeah, there was a problem here. And that's where, then you can't fix the rest of it. Because you have, that's the first step to accountability, is knowing that a problem exists. Otherwise, if we deny it, sweep it under the rug, or whatever, it festers, and that not only causes problems down the road, not only for yourself, but the people you are attempting to serve. And it creates distrust and resentment. And I feel like, especially like, not just with the Hansville Police Department, but like in other avenues of our life here in Hansville, a lot, there's a lot of resentment towards this town that's been building for quite some time, or I feel that way, anyway. And if, I feel like if I, you know, say I messed up on something, or some matter, it'd be my prior, my biggest imperative to admit it and then work on how to fix it, to the best of my knowledge. And that would include working with either whoever's the mayor, who's the other councilperson, so on and so forth, on getting it addressed and fixed, almost like a tech support team. Because it was, this isn't a solo job, really. It's, it's a team effort. Actually, it's a village effort, if we're really getting honest. Takes a village.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Shelton, same question. If a city program you supported failed to deliver, how would you take responsibility and address it?
Well, I can truthfully say, you know, a lot of times, you don't know if things are gonna work. That's where trial and error comes in, you know. But I think working teamwork with your other council people and everything, you know, you got to come together and work together, because more can be done if you work together versus going at each other. So I would be the first to step up to the plate and say that maybe I didn't see this coming, you know, but I will work to fix it, whatever the problem is. And like I said, it just goes back to teamwork. I just believe everybody, if you have good council people, mayor and everything, works together, you can get more done. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Thank you, Mr. Mann and Ms. Shelton. We're going to go into our closing statements.
Oh, Lord.
Mr. Mann, I'm gonna let you go first, since Ms. Shelton went first on the introduction, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Closing remarks, you have two minutes.
Well, regarding the closing remarks, I would like to say that I, I am honored that I've even been gotten this far as a candidate. It's kind of, it's, in a sense, I feel like I'm following the footsteps of my father. He was on the council moons ago. And if he was watching me from heaven, I would just think that if nothing else, he'd be very proud of me for stepping up to the plate and just doing it. Not like, not trying to sound like Nike or anything, but, but I'm just, I'm proud that I, I just, you know, I stuck to my guns, I committed to it, and I'm doing it. Now, it may not always be, you know, peaches and roses all the time, but that's okay. And that's part of the building process. It builds character. And it also, and it allows me not only to be a stronger person, but I feel like it also helps inspire to become better people in this town. And I guess that's ultimately what leadership is about. And I guess that's ultimately what leadership is about. You lead by example. And because examples, you know, is to preach a lot stronger and communicate a lot louder than offering live service.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mann. And Ms. Shelton, your closing statements, you have two minutes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out and hearing us today. And like I said, I love my town. I've lived in the city over 40 years, and I would say people are food for my soul. I've always been one that has let, lent, give a hand out for anybody that's in need of something, you know. I think we have to, like I said, work together, and we can make this, not that Hansville is a bad place, by no means, but there's been a lot of hiccups, and we've got a lot to take care of. And I can assure you, again, and I know I've said that a lot, if elected, I will work diligently to put Hansville back, and it's gonna take time, and things are not gonna happen overnight. But we can't do anything but grow. We do not need to go back. We need to move forward. So we need to put it in D for drive and keep moving Hansville forward and give them, the citizens, the things that they deserve.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. And with that, that puts this debate in the books. We would like to wish the candidates all the best in this upcoming election, and we want to thank everyone who came out today to support and to come out and hear your candidates. And we'd like to thank everybody who's watching at home. We will have our next debate coming up shortly, and we'll be back in about 20 minutes. Thank you.[1793.33][1793.33]